Okay, time being six thirty-three, I call the Halifax Planning Board into session. All members present except for Carlos. On the agenda, we have a Form A for nineteen eight dash oh-six Webby Engineering for Pratt Street, Thompson Street and River Street. Six forty, we have discussion for three pasture lane. At six fifty, we have Caesar.
Carl.
Carl.
Yeah.
The IT director. And then at seven o'clock, we have O'Reilly's Auto Parts coming in. We have minutes to approve, signatures for the registry of deeds for reorganization, and bills to pay. And ongoing, we have reorganization of the board, zoning law bylaw reviews, review of and approval of a letter for Walmart and Autumn Lane as built. I have a motion to accept the agenda is read?
Make a motion to accept the agenda is read.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Hi.
So first off, I'd like to welcome our newest member.
Thanks.
Amy.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do we have paperwork that needs to be signed?
The only thing I put in her folder was the thing that you probably already did it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I didn't know.
That's okay, thanks.
Okay. So we're all set?
I think so.
Okay.
Do you want it now?
Sure. You guys already reviewed this at the last meeting, right?
What was she doing?
That was so sweet.
No, this was just a copy that will end up signed.
So I'm gonna look at this and say that obviously the wetlands are only delineated on the lots we're talking about and not, you know, something that's already built, right?
Right, that's...
Yep, it's kinda nice.
So what are they doing here? This is splitting this into two parcels?
They're doing this in this lot. So to redivide one oh seven four zero. So maybe it was all one.
This is four zero.
One four zero eight right here on the left-hand side.
So it gets me to believe that this was one piece and they're actually creating three.
It's a purpose of this plan to redivide lot, show creating meeting the minimum zoning requirements for a lot and try to help that.
So Webby Engineering.
So it's one...
The director of land.
So they create in this lot? This lot? And this one?
Yeah, just by redividing. That must've been all contiguous, all of them.
Was this part of it at one time, too?
It was at one time, it was cut off before.
Yep.
Who's the...
The Mark Briggs?
Or who the plans were prepared for?
Is that the same? Just this is like different?
Yeah, it should just be just the coffee.
That's the same, I think, but just the more expensive coffee.
Yeah, so they'll have to do this and this is the piece will actually get recorded down the registry, so they require it to be on the bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So would it be a full application again?
I think so.
With maybe just that one plan that got modified? Something like that? Okay.
Yeah.
And if you wanna send it digitally?
You can do that.
I can email it out.
The fact that we don't, we're not changing like the drainage or anything, I don't know if you want the drainage report again, like, yeah, exactly. It's a waste of paper, it's a waste of...
What is it you are modifying on the sheet?
The...
The word?
This is the existing house. Also gotta remember to use the other pens.
So that was the ranch that they sold a couple of years ago.
Yep.
Is any of this land in the flood zone at all? I mean, like the river's what, right here, so is any of it in the flood zone, like flood zone A?
Yeah, it's the hundred year flood.
Oh, there, thank you.
Yep.
I didn't see it 'cause it's so big.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, they're not, they're not using this land for building at the moment.
What is their, um...
They're only...
Yeah, I assume it's vacant now.
Yeah, they're just, they're just reconfiguring the land, the lot lines.
So they're not asking for...
Creating house lots.
Yeah, I assume it's gonna be...
Potentially, but...
Yeah, so it's like this is the house lot.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't say that, though, that's not their intention. You know what I'm saying? Like, they'd have to come back with a house, basically, house on there to show...
No. No, not for us.
The area where it's gonna be put.
No, when they create a lot, when they create the lot, they don't have to show a house on it. They just have to show that they have the upland.
I feel like on all the Form As that we've done, they've always put like an area where the house may be or could lie.
We always have the requisite circle.
Yeah.
But the house also doesn't have to be there, that's actually to show that the angle that coming off the road that the lot doesn't.
Okay. It's just a little different from the normal ones that we've done in the past.
That's this requisite circle here. So if the lot lines came in and cut through that circle with this tangent on here, then that doesn't meet our requirement.
Okay.
It's a way to keep people from taking the least amount of frontage and then narrowing it down to get the most amount, so it's kinda...
And then we've got other language in there about the...
I see what you're saying, so for a certain distance, it has to have that.
Yeah, you need the, yeah.
Okay.
And then we have other language in there about the angle that it comes off the street, too. So it's, it's kinda repetitive, but...
Well, isn't that the frontage lot of sixty feet with thirty and thirty? Not thirty and, fifty feet with thirty and thirty, is that what it is?
Well, on these, these would be one fifty for the Form A.
Well, they definitely have that, so it's not even a near question.
So this says forty thousand square feet of contiguous upland.
And that's one thirty-five. And that's one hundred and, oh, that's a big lot.
Yeah, it's ninety-seven thousand contiguous square feet of upland.
Is, you know, obviously I'm new, so I'm gonna ask a lot of questions, right?
Definitely.
So is there anything in our bylaws that says that like when we do do any of this, that it protects any of the abutters from getting water issues, like what they...
We're not doing anything here other than subdivide or divide the lots off.
But yes, if they were to propose like changes to the grading and stuff, that's what we could start asking those, but in this, that's kinda not for this part of the plan.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I mean, this is just proposing land separation.
So this is coming as an A and R, which means approval under subdivision control is not required.
Okay.
Because they have frontage on an accepted street away, the hundred and fifty feet of frontage, so it doesn't come under our subdivision. If they didn't have that and they were creating these lots in the back, then they'd have to go to subdivision control, that's why you have to create a road.
Yeah, it's kinda like us saying that they're able to satisfy all of the requirements, so they don't really need any permission because they can satisfy. So that's why we're saying that they don't need our approval.
Okay.
Anything that needs subdivision control, that needs to be applied for under subdivision control.
Okay, two lots.
Yeah, well, there's only two ways to create the lots, legal ways to create lots. One is an A and R where they have frontage on the road and they have the square footage, so they cut it off. And the other is with the subdivision where they put in a road and they get frontage off of that.
It's only present this last time, last meeting?
Nobody's seen it.
Nobody's seen it.
I was in the audio ops last time.
Yep.
So I've seen it.
I do believe part of the reason that they're not gonna show up to represent this one is 'cause it's, it's so straightforward.
Yeah, it's straightforward.
Yeah.
I just like when people are here, just in case we do have questions. So otherwise, it just delays them.
The only thing we don't see here is that the wetlands have been delineated and accepted.
How do you know that? 'Cause I see them, so how do you know they're not delineated and accepted?
There's no...
Over here? A combination of delineated wetlands by ECR two thousand and seventeen and compiled information from Massachusetts GIS.
So they took that stuff off a plan, they didn't actually go out and get it delineated and accepted from conservation yet?
Yeah, the only issue I can see possibly is if they do find that after a field survey that this becomes short, they're gonna probably come in and they would ask for a change in this lot line, 'cause they'd have enough to switch square footage.
If this line changed and came up here more, they only have forty thousand now.
Yeah, and they'd probably come in and propose another change.
Yeah, or they just go to conservation first, save them for potential.
I assume if they feel as if they don't have to, it's more expensive in time.
It's gonna take time anyways if it needs to be...
But even if they did that, that's not gonna help them, 'cause that wouldn't be contiguous upland.
Well, I mean, like, where else would be on this lot?
Right, 'cause it stops. They can't count those.
Right.
Maybe they can count as those.
'Cause it's continuous, it has to be together, right?
Yep.
So where would they put the house here? I mean, it would have to be fifty feet off the street. They're not asking for a house, but...
That's what this line is here, this little setback line.
But then how many feet off the wetlands it has to be? I forget how many feet it is off the wetlands. Oh, yes.
I don't actually know what...
We have a fifty-foot no-touch zone.
That's what I thought, so...
Oh, if this is fifty.
A walk skinny house?
Well, no, it's quite a distance back there, 'cause this would be fifty, so if you took fifty off that, still would leave.
Okay.
Let's see, even right there, the closest, eighty-five feet or so.
So they'd have...
Behind the fifty.
Yeah.
Okay. Just thinking. 'Cause it's sort of already set right here, right?
That's the grade.
But these lines could change based on delineation and if it was more or less depending on, 'cause depending on when the GIS was built, in my thought process, I could be wrong, I'm just a girl, but all the houses over here that are built could raise these wetlands since the GIS and the, uh...
Yeah, a field survey could definitely show something different.
But where they're not asking for houses right now.
They won't be back to us, though.
Yep.
This is the plan, if we sign this plan, that's what they go with.
Okay, gotcha.
But it makes sense, because if this is their property, they're gonna, this is the best shot at making something out of that, so it's a, it's kinda a take it or leave it. If it doesn't work, they, they're better off creating the lot anyway.
Okay. So Paul, you said that you thought it should go to conservation first, is that what you're thinking?
I mean, that's just my, I mean, I don't know, to them, I think it's, it's probably, well, it's actually probably worth making them go to conservation, just so that we know that these lines are right.
Yeah, but it's the lot lines that we're concerned with. I don't see really the issue as far as...
You could always put a recommendation out there, either which way, it's gonna cost them more money. For them to get a new, uh, anything that's new.
It's just really not like our issue, and I don't think it's in their best interest, so I don't, I don't see why we should impose that on them.
They don't have to go to conservation until they're ready to do something.
Yeah.
And file NOIs and stuff, it's not...
Yeah, I don't think that's helping them, I think that's just imposing more things upon them.
So this is an estate, who's proposing this through Webby? Not that it's not...
It looks like the previous state of Wyman Briggs. So basically, what happens here is they've presented this plan, and we basically endorse it. Even if they didn't have the wetlands here, we still endorse this, because this is a lot, that's what they're creating.
Right.
They have the frontage part. Because we endorse this doesn't mean it's buildable.
Right, 'cause there still has to be practice and such. Right?
So is there a motion to endorse Form A?
Make a motion to approve the Form A plan at Thompson Pratt and River Streets, being map one zero seven, lot four. Applicant being Mark Briggs at one fifty-three North Main Street, Middle Borough. Plan provided by Webby Engineering. Plan being dated February eleventh, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, I have a motion to endorse the Form A, just a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Basically, June sixth.
Yeah, it's not in that spot, is it?
No, it's not.
Want us to slide down?
No, no, he's, they're just, they're awkward as it is. Put forty eighteen on here.
No, I didn't. Actually, these ones would be all right, it'd be this one that I'd be worried about. I'll make Jonathan sign all these, just to make sure.
It's all good.
Did you both get this one?
Uh, I didn't do that one.
That's it, still all right. Fuck, I guess we can deal with that later, right?
What?
Reconfiguring as far as who's new on what line.
You can just sign below. Yeah, 'cause Carlos is vice chair, so it doesn't matter. Mine can be left there.
So here?
Yep.
Do we wanna jump ahead to discuss with Caesar since another building command?
Sure.
What's up, everyone?
You're, uh... How you doing?
Okay. Working late. IT.
So I was looking to see if you could come in, and I, I think what we all need is an email address.
That is...
With the town.
That is happening, if you guys wanna move forward with that, now we can set that up.
Okay.
We can work on that. We require, we wanna go through our preliminary training, that can be done over the phone, not train on the email system, it's cybersecurity training that everyone's to take to understand phishing and cybercrime and stuff like that, 'cause it is gonna be theoretically in the town's network, so, you know. We've had several emails going, people saying that, hey, we caught you watching naughty things on webcams.
Little phishing, huh?
Right.
Yeah, so, uh, and people email me, scare the jeeber out of them, saying, I swear I got edited and looking at anything like that. I'm like, don't worry, it would've sucked if you did. But we do that basic training, it's about, you know, between twenty minutes to half an hour, it could take longer than that if you guys do it in a group, or if you guys have any other questions thereafter. Everyone has to sign just a confidentiality agreement and the policy agreement, and then you guys run away. And then just give you guys email addresses, they show you guys how to get them on your phones, or access them from any desktop application.
Do you use Office three sixty-five or...
Yeah, Office three sixty-five. We have, with your installation, with your licenses, every town employee actually gets a version of Microsoft Office for free, the latest one, that includes Outlook, Word, Excel, PowerPoint.
Cool.
And Publisher. And you also have online versions of Word and a terabyte of storage on OneDrive, should you guys want to store. It's recommended that you store all your work files in OneDrive, that way if you do ever dismiss yourself from the committee, you are, you can still get that information, you can just kinda be underway. Cancel it.
What do they use as a file storage? Box yet, or...
For, what, I'm sorry?
File storage at all?
They, well, internally?
Yeah.
We just use a file server.
Okay.
And then for boards and committees, we're gonna have them use OneDrive. But we're, we're working, I've been working with some vendor to, slow, slow-moving process, but trying to kind of sync them together, so that way you guys can save the file server and it's backing up locally, but there's a lot of incompatibilities with Office three sixty-five and on-premise as far as files is concerned.
Yeah.
So the rule with them is anyone who has a network log-on to get access to the computers here would just have access to the file server, anyone who just has an Office three sixty-five account, which would be primarily for the committee members and volunteers of that nature, they would be using OneDrive, and that's where you guys can hook up OneDrive to your computers, so you guys, you know, almost like a file server, you just save it to that OneDrive folder.
Yeah, main thing, so we can always get it, so on bylaws, easier rather than printing out new books or anything.
Where, one of the things I'm looking at is e-coding down the line, like far down the line, 'cause we, obviously the person we have doing it now has two, has her own personal little laptop to do eighty minutes in typing up a screen, so, because I don't wanna put too much on her, and, you know, she has, she goes at her own pace and she's comfortable what she's doing. Eventually, I'd like to do e-coding where you guys can actually just pull up the code figure without, if you go to the website, look through a whole list of PDFs, find the one you want, then find out if it's not the one you want, then back in the browser you go, and all of this stuff. This is supposed to have a search engine in the bylaws, so you can start with a specific term, and it brings up every single bylaw with that term in it.
That'd be sweet.
So we're doing something along those lines, but that's gonna be down maybe two or three years before we implement that process, but that is something I'm looking at.
Isn't that on the website, the town website now? Like, 'cause when I look up the bylaws, I can do search and find it, and it highlights...
Yeah, so that's, so the bylaws we have online are in PDFs, so you can do a search and find within that PDF, but depending on the, the technological savviness of a user, they might not know the Control F for the find button, they actually spend time sifting through the entire document. And for some, I believe our, the town bylaws in general, they're actually set it up by chapter.
Yeah.
So if you're not sure what specific chapter you're looking for, you have to look at the actual list of chapters that are there. I mean, typically, they're broken up by department and authority, but that can change from time to time, depending on the policy you're looking at. So you can do that, that's one of the more common ways to do it. But a lot of towns, I think, move them over to the e-coding, because with the e-coding system, it gives other benefits other than just searching. When you actually make a modification, it actually keeps a history of the modifications throughout the years, as opposed to just uploading up new PDF with the changes in it. So it actually tells you...
So you can see what the changes were.
You can see when they were, what they were, you can actually read the old policy and everything. So it provides that type of...
And the chance of someone grabbing the old information is less likely.
So we would just say, this is the real version, and whatever's not here, you should use it as a reference. That's kinda what I'm hoping to...
Yeah, helps.
Obviously, we're hoping to get the support, the board is stuck, and I'm hoping to get tribal support on it, but I, I don't, I, I understand why some people might be efficient about it. I, I get it, which is why I'm pushing it out a couple of years, 'cause it does take time to digitalize it and form an actual process to, internally, to manage that data and then update it.
I just think it's, it's an easier way to get at the information, so I, I think you'd be providing something to everyone in town who can easily get at the information they want.
Yeah, a lot of towns are moving over to that type of setup, where they're not just publishing PDFs anymore.
Moving through the books, not that easy.
No. I had a look at Comcast's contract yesterday, over five hundred pages, it's not fun. Didn't find what I was looking for, I wasted my time, and then they emailed me and gave me the wrong answer I wanted, but nonetheless.
The other thing that we're looking, and I was gonna bring it up to the board tonight, was looking to get a laptop. We have a projector, it hasn't been hooked up yet.
Oh, where? I have it at my office.
But...
The projector or this projector screen?
The projector, and the screen happened with nothing.
Well, they'll say the projectors nowadays are, you can get them like this.
Yeah.
So, so they're, go ahead.
So I didn't know what we had in the budget. Did you look at that?
Yeah, I actually put it in there, we have a little under six hundred dollars.
Does that buy a laptop?
No. But, like, I have options for you, I'm not gonna come empty-handed.
Do you, do, if it works for the town and with the town saying, do you have to buy like a legit one, or like...
You have to get fully loaded.
Yeah, we, as much as I know...
Just 'cause you can build one so much cheaper.
Yeah, yeah, as much as I know that you can do that, the reason why I don't allow is because the minute I say yes to one person...
I, I understand, that's why I brought it up.
...and you don't wanna do it. I, I just tell people we have a standard build that we have, going through our hardware vendor, and all laptops, we also put a warranty on it, that way if it does break, we get it replaced, 'cause those are gonna be more prone to break than a desktop would. But it did come with options, as you know, the projector's about ten years old, and it has not been used.
It's, okay.
So you can...
I didn't realize it was that old, I knew it was before my time.
Yeah, we got it, but Terry, I think the label on it said two thousand eight or two thousand nine or something like that, I had to look at the label downstairs.
It was before I started with...
Still has the original packing date.
Yeah, it was, yeah. So anyway, you can either hook up the projector, the, the one disadvantage of that is we, we have to have maintenance come in, set aside time for them to actually come in, go on a ladder, hook up, drill, whatever they gotta do, and I'm not a building person, that's why I deal with computers, but I'm gonna assume that there's other stuff that needs fixing. And I'm not a building person, that's why I deal with computers, but I'm gonna assume that there's other stuff that you'd find out before they start throwing holes in the ceiling.
So are we gonna find out that it's not worth the investment of hooking it up because we've gone ten years without requiring?
Well, and I think not only that, not that it's gonna be worthless, I just think that as times have progressed, you know, I got I got prices for interactive TV screens.
Get a cheaper, easier tabletop?
It's literally, you get a TV mount-
Well, it's money.
Right here, and it's called an interactive whiteboard, we're looking to get one for the police department for their training room. The fire department got one, they, it's a smart board actually for them, because they got it through a grant. But they love it, it's perfect for training, it's touchscreen, it has the digital markers, so if you did, if you did have a plan up there, you can actually go up there and draw and mark and-
Yeah, part of the thing is we don't, I'd hate to see us get anything too elaborate, we don't use them, you know, I don't wanna-
And, and that I understand. So with the interactive TV, what we are planning on doing, and this is, this is obviously up to you guys, what we're planning on doing is I'm actually proposing to replace the town projector. I say town projector because we only have one other than the one you guys have.
That would make sense and then we share it.
Replace it with a sixty-five inch interactive display that's on a stand that can roll around. That way when it comes to setting it up, it's literally just roll it out of the closet, turn it on and you have what you need. People can make their annotations within their trainings, they can play the videos they want to do on YouTube, whatever it is. And it's just simple, you know, involves me a lot less and involves maintenance a lot less.
Yeah, one problem we have here is like we have the seating there, we have seating here, so if you had it up there, it's-
Well, no, no, it would be on a stand.
Right, that's what I was saying, so if you had something on a stand, you can move it down there.
Or-
Or if we had to move rooms.
That's, that, or we can move this over to that side, right, and have the whiteboard behind us.
I think we're getting a little crazy, we haven't even used the one we have. I just don't want to see, I don't want to see us spending money on this thing.
Maybe a third option here, right?
Yeah.
Think of this, we, what do we really need a laptop for? It's basically for something in front of us to scroll through something really quick, we'll get an email if need be. But what about, let's just say for security reasons, I, just an iPad, right? An iPad with a small portable projector that you can get like a hundred bucks, I feel like.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not concerned with projectors, so you guys can go anywhere.
And we have this, we have the screen.
It'd be nice to provide the laptop, I still think, I still think that's an issue.
It would, it would, but laptops come with a lot of, sometimes a lot of nuances. They can come with a lot of nuances, so the laptop that you're probably gonna build, it's able to withstand all of the, you know, the antivirus software, all the applications that are gonna be loaded onto it that are probably, that are town permitting that you're building. If you're looking for a six hundred dollar laptop, that's four gig, one terabyte, that's not gonna withstand all the stuff that he's gonna put on there. It's gonna be so slow.
Well, actually, we actually upgraded our RAM because it was Windows ten now, so it is eight gig memory. A lot of, so like, I don't know what you guys are using laptop for, I don't know what it chooses.
Taking all the minute notes, like there's a lot of- I wasn't even thinking of that, I was thinking that we could have it here, we can pull up the, the bylaws right here, if we had a projector, we could put it up on the screen.
Using like your search thing.
To go through it and if we come in to use laptop, you know, that it would be there for the planner board. But also, I see the plans coming in digital, I mean, the, all this paper stuff is crazy.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody's got it on digital, why can't they just send it to us on digital and we could pull it up?
And then put it up there.
I mean, we're gonna have to do paper too, but- Yeah, but six copies of a twenty-four page plan and on a twenty-four by thirty-six, I mean, you know. So digitally, we could pull it up, we could put it on the screen. Presentations be the same thing, somebody comes into a presentation, roll that screen around so everybody can see it and go, that was, that was my thought.
Yeah, so the interactive display, like I said, depends on what we have at the end of the year, depends on whether I can get a grant for it, it really depends, I mean, I get informed by the state of what grants are available, what we're eligible for applying for. So obviously I could possibly have funds to buy this in July, I could have funds to buy it in any month of the year, I might have to wait till town meeting. But that's the original plan. Another thing, the other aspect is I'm also trying to get something in the board of selection meeting room. So if you guys felt it was necessary to start meeting down there because of one area fifteen and their cameras being all robotic down there, if the interactive display is already up there, you guys already have everything you guys need.
That is a pretty sweet meeting.
Well, I dislike the idea of pulling the resources, make one, because we don't meet on the same nights, shouldn't be a conflict, it just makes-
Listen, if we had one interactive display, the reason why I would say keep the rolling one up here is for the great hall and I'm not, I personally, being in charge of managing that, knowing that thing being rolled around like it's a child.
Not knowing where it is, and what if it tips over and things like that.
And I don't think it's gonna fit in the elevator, never mind that's gonna have to be lifted up by maintenance up to the great hall. So if we can get either one that rolls or one that's stationary in the meeting room, because they have finance in there, they can, that would use it, they have a lot of trains in there that might use it, the board of selection that would use it, especially if there's a, a hearing and there's a video that needed to play, right there.
What about a wireless keyboard, can you optimize it with the wireless keyboard?
Yeah, so the, the interactive display that we're looking at is a ViewSonic interactive display.
Okay.
It comes with a pre-built Android operating system in it, which is like the Android phones.
Of course, so you can bring out, you can marry your phone, uh, marry your screen on a phone, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, because if you're on that air thing, you just connect to the network of the actual device and you can actually marry your, you can bring in a laptop and wirelessly display your screen, any more screen on the screen. But I'm also, I also ordered, I've not ordered, I also got a quote for this particular model or vendor has the option to put a slot in PC, so I think that way I can connect to the network, that way if, let's say it was, I needed a Windows PC.
Yeah.
You guys can utilize that as well. But it's a, it would be a sixty-five inch interactive display, but you guys would have little markers, so you guys need to go up there and say, hey, what about this part of the map right here, instead of using the mouse to point at it.
That would be really good for the viewers too, because they'd really see what we were talking about, I don't know how well they see the plans right now, you know what I mean?
And I'm, and I'm almost sure I can talk to Rich Mary fifty that if we could probably hook it up to the cable system, that way they can actually make it an input. So when you guys are talking, you guys want to show the viewer the screen on YouTube, you can actually transition it to the actual, what's on the screen and they can see it without having to look at the screen through the camera.
Right.
I just made another input, I don't know, I'm not a cable access person, I'm sure, I'm sure we can figure out something, I can't imagine somebody to think about that.
Yeah, my, my thing is we just need to come up to modern day here and be able to do the digital plans.
As for the, as for the laptop, on July first, I'm replacing the COA director's laptop and getting a laptop for the highway survey. Old laptops and old equipment are repurposed depending on their speed, their whatever components they have in the machine and then they're upgraded as a, as need be, obviously Windows seven is going away. So come July first, once they take the COA director's laptop, it still works, it still functions. I'm pretty much gonna go in there and upgrade to Windows ten and that then becomes a loaner laptop. If you guys wanted to indefinitely loan that and keep it up on the planning board, Terry can hold on to it, I can have that loaned out to the planning board and then you guys can utilize that during the meetings.
I think that would be a great option because it's no money out and then we see how it works and-
Recycling.
If it's, if it's exactly what we need or-
And it'll have Microsoft Office on it, it'll have Outlook, it will have whatever you guys want. I know some departments and some boards have had interest, specifically the beautification committee, in saying that they would like to have a board email address. You guys do have the, if you guys want, you guys will each have your own individual ones, that's gonna be your requirement. If you guys wanted to have a centralized mailbox that you guys could put on the website for everyone to email that mailbox specifically for meeting discussion or for your plans to be submitted there, that way when you guys are opening up your attachments, you guys aren't having to log on to someone else's account to get that information. You guys can even hook up a generic email account on that box, it's up to you.
I think we might as well because then if for some reason somebody in town wanted to say something, it gives them another place to say it, so I'd say yes.
It's opposed to emailing one member and then the other member have to log on the laptop, say they sent it to you, but they, but he's the one that's using the laptop, he's logged on his email, it's like, we afford him to email, he won't, well, just creates a disruption.
Makes it easier, so people can't show up here on a Thursday or they, you know.
But we're also looking at, I talked to Terry, digitalizing the plan submission process, at least for building, I assume it sounded like you guys wanted to do that too. July first, we're getting a forms application to create digital forms, actual web forms, not PDF forms, where people, where we're gonna, I already built a template actually, we'll talk to you about that next week, where people go in there, fill out a form, submit their plan and it'll actually send an email to the specified email account with a link to download those plans because our email system probably won't accept them depending on the status. So it's more, more like a, kind of a third party gateway to get those files when we need to.
And that's what that board email would be for?
Yeah, we can have the board emails, let you guys know when there's plans in there, and Terry would have access to it to answer the general inquiries and it's not like that we don't want people thinking they're just emailing a account that's viewed once a month or once a year.
Those are secure, right? That form's gonna be HTML five, HTML, HTML five and secure?
Yes, but it's actually, I don't know what, what code they use, it's, uh, I don't know, it's Zoho.
Yes.
It's Zoho forms.
Okay.
So we can actually put in, in the forms themselves, there are many different features, like we could put workflows in there for pools, so if you guys end up taking a plan, eventually this is if, down the line, if you guys wanted to use that as like a complete permit system per se, a makeshift permit system, you guys can approve it and I can have to go to another department and it's, it allows us to expand our lot of the streams. Maybe in twenty years we'll get to that point, but right now it's just something to take everything digitally, allow us to get on that track of moving in a more digital era and to avoid paper at all costs. Very cool. So I will plan to have the laptop ready for you guys. I would say we're, we're starting a cable project on July first, hopefully. And then while that's, I, I'm probably busy the first week of July, but the second week of July, I can get the laptop or the third week, depends on how long it takes them to send it to me. Once I have her laptop in, I'll get her laptop, wipe it clean, put the Windows ten on it, whatever we're gonna do with it. And then I'll give it to Terry and you guys can start using it.
Okay. Okay. So do we have to do the formal discussion about security and all that, like is that something that, would you be able to come in and just run all of us down real quick, like during one of our meetings, is that possible?
That is perfectly fine.
Yeah, that'd be what, just because-
There's a lot to it now.
Well, that way we're all, we're all at one place, one time and do it one.
Yeah, and whatever works for you guys, if you guys aren't able to make it to a meeting, you guys want to have a phone call, I'm unfortunately to myself, I'm available twenty-four seven, so.
I appreciate that, I'm not sitting on a phone call for twenty minutes.
But like I said, it's, it's literally if you guys aren't able to make it to a meeting or if something came up, you guys can't make it to the meeting, I'm always available to just meet in person, phone call, whatever it is you guys need. We're hoping to implement a learning management system at some point, that way you guys can actually just do it on your own time and I can just assign it to you guys. But right now they don't have the resources.
Yeah, you basically certify us, so we gotta hear it all?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. And the emails?
Emails, we can, I can actually start that tomorrow and have it done on Monday.
Okay.
I'll just, Terry, could you just submit a ticket asking to have emails created for all the board members and I need their first and last name as well as their contact information, which will be their personal email address and cell phone number. And then once I have that, I'll create your ACRs, which are also known as access control requests, is the formal process I created.
And then any emails from the town can go to us that way?
I'll update the website appropriately, so that way any emails that are linked to your personal email addresses will automatically be and not, I won't be touching your personal email accounts. Anything that on the website that says your personal email address, don't change to the town email address and a notification will be sent out to the town letting them know that the planning board has official town emails.
Oh, like on the website and stuff, it won't have our personal emails?
They don't put it on there anyways.
None of their emails are on the website.
Because I don't want my personal-
Some boards, some boards aren't like that, I don't know which.
Yeah, I think we're just behind the scenes.
Yeah.
We're in the heat.
You guys don't have to do that, I mean, on the new website, we probably, we might, I don't know, that's a, that's a question, if Charlie wants to do that, I'll let him, but-
It's one of the stores and stuff.
And you guys can use this email address for any town business, so like as you're on beautification, this email can be used for planning board and beautification and any other town business you do.
Okay.
You're not gonna have two different emails.
I was just wondering that in my head, I was like-
You're gonna have one mail account, that's for the town that will be backed up for seven years, so don't do any of that. And everything's probably worked.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, well, thank you guys very much.
Thanks Caesar.
Go Bruins.
Right.
I'm gonna just be my-
Eight o'clock.
Bye guys.
Bye. Andrea?
Yes.
Any discussion on pasture land?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so the street has not been finished and it's been, I think like twelve years. The builder was supposed to, I guess, put the top coat on the street, put in a sidewalk, put in trees. I don't care what sidewalk or tree, all I care about is the street, right now the street is a hazard during the winter, the snowplow, I mean, first of all, the town doesn't recognize my street as a street, okay?
It's not accepted.
Right, it's been twelve years and the builder is supposed, you guys should be holding the builder responsible for that. During the winter, the snowplow came down the street, knocked the manhole cover up, psh, right onto the front lawn. You know, um, the, I would not put any kids on that street, all around the manhole covers are deteriorating. One's gonna fall right through, I mean, what happens if a sinkhole develops in the middle of the street, that it's, the driveways are getting ruined. Right now there is black gravel everywhere, it, it's a mess. And I mean, I pay my taxes and they're supposed to go towards the street and the town doesn't even recognize it as a street, so am I not supposed to pay my taxes anymore?
The, um, the builder put the road in and the town held the last lot, what they did is they tied up the last lot as a bond for the road, we don't do that anymore because of just what happened over there, it happened in another street in town too because the economy turned, the lot wasn't worth any money to them because they weren't selling the houses, so they just walked away and stopped working on the road. There has been discussion about coming in there and finishing it, but nobody has come, they've, they've asked questions about it, but nobody's really started working over there.
I'm here, I, I own the lot now, I'm not the original builder.
Oh, okay.
So don't hate me.
Okay.
This is Adam Murray.
Adam, that's cool. The, um, so the guy that owned the lot, I know him and he told me it was a great deal, yada, yada, yada. No, he gave, he gave me a fair price for it and the deal was he was supposed to put sidewalks in.
And finish the road.
Fix some of the level of the road and put a top coat. You know, and there was a couple of other items, like the manhole covers and so on and so forth and next thing we know, the engineer that originally did the plan, that was working with you guys, was gone. So Amy or Amory engineering comes in and the estimate's a hundred and fifty-six thousand. And the lot's not worth a hundred and fifty-six thousand, but I know that's like an inflated, you know, estimate, you can probably get it done for a hundred thousand or less, but-
Well, I mean, he has to estimate what that cost is and he doesn't estimate on the low side and then there's a contingency put on the top of that.
No, they're a good company, I know where they are.
Yeah, and there's a contingency put on the top, so it's- You're right, you could probably get it done a little cheaper, but you just, now, now you're balancing, right, because now you own-
Well, that's, I mean, that's part of the problem, the other problem is that we didn't realize how much work it was and we're building houses elsewhere, so you know how I work every day of the week, I work Saturday, Sunday, it's just getting the time to get over there. We planned to do it, now all the pavers are, you know, buried up over there. So I think what we should do is try to get a plan together and at least get some of her issues addressed and once we can get to the point of paving the road, then do the dent.
Yeah, because I think it does-
At least work on the manhole covers and so on and so forth, so and get the gravel off the road.
I, I think what's happened at this point, the, the road is deteriorating so bad that the base coat is really gone.
Yeah, that's what, um, Amory had said, there's a section that-
I mean, I drove down there and-
No, I went down there and I was like, oh, God, cones and this and that.
Yeah. I don't think the, um, the, the basins were ever lowered down to the base coat, they were up higher than the base coat again.
Right, yeah, they gotta be tripped out and raised and so on and so forth. We, we intend to do it, it's just, um, I have to talk to the partner and want to come up with a plan.
I have a question, how did it transfer out of the former developers?
To me?
Yeah, like without-
I got the amboozled.
No, but I want to know where the town's control was missed.
I don't think you can, I- I don't think you can, you know.
Well, if that lot was held for a bond.
Cause when he got the transfer, they conveyed the lot, they conveyed the parcel that is the street. And, yeah, so he took on everything. So he, he did take on the responsibility to fix.
Okay, that's what my question was, I was like.
Yeah, it didn't free him, I understand that slowed down the process, but that is, still has to get done.
He can't go in and build the house there until he satisfies.
Right, the bank, the bank won't be happy.
Okay, so you took on the bond and.
And I wish I had. I'd rather be a stick fight over here, this is awful, but we will get it done, it's just a matter of.
Do we know with like the worst, like safety issues, is those things, can we just?
That's what I was saying, maybe we just get in there and get the manhole covers the right height and then at least pave around it. Until we get to pave the road.
Okay.
I've had aggregate go in there and T L Edwards, and I have one more person giving us a bit. It's just a lot with the extra coat. I don't think it needs three coats.
My biggest thing is that the road's horrible. I'm selling the house. I mean, I'm out of here, you know, but. Nobody wants to buy a house, I mean, in twelve years, every time it snows, I don't get, for twelve years, I've not gotten my mail. Cause there is. They pop plow. They don't even plow down like my side of the street, so I don't even know how my lung got all torn up this year, it must have been new plow drive or something, but. The street becomes a one-lane street. When we got all that snow a couple of years ago, the snow piles were. I mean, you could barely fit a car down the road. It was up over my head, my truck got damaged multiple times, cause I couldn't, I couldn't even back out of my driveway.
A bank would also look at that.
Is there, is there any chance that we can, because we got a new person involved and like. I I don't think that he's had the chance, I really don't, I I forget what exactly the timing is and when you took ownership.
It's been like over a year.
And I wanna know where the town's control is because there was a town meeting before and my neighbor went to it. And that that town meeting, I believe, it was said that the lot next to me was to be sold so that the road could be done. That lot was never ever marketed for sale. It was never even put, there was never.
Probably someone's interpretation that.
Right, they would have to take the lot and then sell it.
Yeah, the the town, the process is the town doesn't own the lot. The developer owns the lot, cannot build on it until the road is finished. Like I said, we don't do, we don't do that practice anymore. When times were good and developers came in and they went through the whole development and they finished it, it was working. But when the downturn came in two thousand eight, it just stopped everything. And since then, we do not take the lots back, we make them put up cash bonds.
And since two thousand eight, it's been eleven years and the market's gone up, up, up.
Well, I'm I'm not denying that, but what I'm saying to you is, i- if the lot value is down here and the cost to finish the road is here. It just didn't make sense for them to do it, and I'm not saying that, you know, that was a bad practice of the town.
But I mean, the builder is allowed to do other stuff, you know, and just forget what he, you know, committed to in the first place.
I'm not the builder.
Oh, I I know, but I'm being the original, he was allowed, I mean, I'm.
Yeah, so.
He never did any more work in the town.
Who was the builder?
This was before my time. Yeah, no, I see, I was just hoping that like we could like find a way to like, if we can get some sort of like time to make you, you know, just to.
Yeah, I need.
It seems like he's gonna do it, and and you know what I mean, so hopefully, I was just hoping that if we could prove you and give you a good feeling of like. I think this is gonna change to, that would help relieve a lot of that, that's really what I'm hoping for.
Because I need to sell this house and then these people who are coming to look at this house are gonna look at this, looking at this road going, oh my god.
There's also bank financing issues that might come up with it too. I'm sorry to say.
I don't, I mean, if you're trying to sell your house, I don't think you can get aggregate out there that quick. I don't think you can get aggregate out there, there that.
No, um, well, they're not bad, but it's, the problem is everybody, when you get this time of year, especially after all the rain we had.
Yeah.
They're all trying to catch up to like a million driveways and other, you know, jobs that Terry had, you know, sign contracts.
Just a, just a thought, this is maybe just a thought, because what I'm hearing is more of safety issues.
That's what I was just saying, I could go in there, at least get it up to snuff, so there's no like, I'm not talking like a hack job.
No.
You know, get the, get the manhole covers right and put an apron around them, so, you know, people are not getting.
Exactly, so what I'm thinking.
Off the street.
Safety issues, to address those obviously first, because one, we don't want anyone in the town getting hurt. And also, two, to protect yourself too from a lawsuit.
Right.
Cause right now, it's in your name.
Right.
And if anyone gets hurt on the, on that street, it's, that's gonna be a lot more expensive, I feel like, than what it would be to fix and patch it anything. You know, so hundred percent, if we can, yeah. Think address the safety issues at least, and then see, maybe make a deal with the contractor, whoever is gonna do the.
Right.
The paving, to say, hey, let's, you know, let's, let's get this up to snuff, let's get everything good.
Right.
And then, you know, deal with this a hundred percent and do a nice job and see what, see what they'll offer, you know?
I mean, it's not like brain surgery.
It's not, but it's, it's.
Is there a chance that you could go in there and sweep the road, get things cleaned up?
Yeah.
So that you can really make an assessment of what needs to be.
Get the attachment for his um skid steer.
To, to.
Yeah, room it up and then take a look at it.
We don't wanna leave it like that for you guys, I mean, I took on responsibility of this and I just wish I could pass it back, but I can't. What I have to do is, you know, follow through.
But what I'm saying is, could you go in and sweep it, make an assessment of, make an assessment of where the base coat needs to be taken out?
Right.
And get that patch back in.
Probably two weeks ago.
Okay.
And um.
Did he say take it out?
He said that there's a section that that he would like to have taken out.
Yep.
You know, that's part of the issue that what happened was, the guy that sold us the lot said. It's got a little bit of leveling on the binder and then a top coat.
It's more than the little level.
Now, I know a top coat's another twenty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
It's just, there's no um.
But there isn't enough left of the base to to really use it as the base, right?
Right, well, that's why I was saying it rip out, there's a big section like right in the middle between the street and then where the houses are. You know what I'm talking about, I'm sure.
Basically where the water.
Drive in to the left-hand side.
Basically where the water sit in the road.
Right.
And that's what deteriorates it, cause it wasn't getting into the catch basins.
Original excavator that developed, you know, built the road, he didn't finish it.
Right.
He um, you know, went back, drove, dived, yada, 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 and. So then Mike could have been stuck with it, not finish, it just, you know, it's kind of a snowball effect.
Right, and I don't think there's even a base in there for the sidewalk.
No.
I think you gotta put the base gravel in there for that.
You know, processed and stripped out, re-ground asphalt and get it ready for the first sidewalk.
Is that part of the estimate you have?
Yes.
No, Amory Engineering, they're, they're a good company, they're very efficient. They know what they're talking about, I think the cost is off, but. So when I went down there with them, the other issue is, I guess, when the original developer did the road. The guy, David, facing, you know, the development from the street on the right-hand side, there's like a little farm there.
Yep.
The guy was made to take all the fence and the chip, you know, all that stuff off the property, now it's gone back on. His driveway is right on the property, the, the corner bound is past the driveway, so I don't know what to do about that either. It's kind of. I have to deal with him right now. The town doesn't.
No.
So what's your timeline to get the road completely done?
I have to talk to Mark, he's the one with the equipment, so I'll talk to him and we'll get back to you by AM next week, is that fair?
Yeah, I mean, you can get ahold of Terry.
Probably sooner than later, but I really have to talk to him on, cause it's his equipment. Here and there, and then we have to get labor up there, you know.
Like, like I said, my big thing is, I would think the first thing to do is go in and sweep it.
Yeah.
Clean up the sides, so you can make an assessment of what needs to be done, maybe chop out the base that needs to go out and get somebody in there to. Redo the base.
She gives me the thing and I get the uh, the sweep up.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. We really appreciate it.
Why can't we single date? I'll go up there, I don't want that kid slipping and sliding, it's just dangerous. I didn't realize that uh. It was, you know, that affect to it.
Okay.
So we can expect that we'll know what's gonna happen and then can we have an update at the next meeting, like would you guys wanna come? I, I wanna follow up on this and get it done.
I gotta talk to him and after the court and get labor and so on and so forth, so I was thinking by AM next week, at least we could talk about. Going forward, we're doing some of these improvements.
Okay.
And then we'll go on to the pavement.
And then just, just keep us informed of what the progress is, if you would.
Yeah, absolutely. If I talk to Terry a few times.
I have your number, I will give follow me.
And if you got it. If you, if you.
Mailbox is full, so.
If um, if you're gonna cut the pavement out, you're gonna need to get ahold of Amory to have him verify what you're doing.
Oh, yeah, that, that's why that was going down there, just to, you know, get on the same page. He gave me all the reports and his, and the plans and all that stuff.
Very cool.
So I'm just thinking that in, in, you know, popping of, uh. Sorry, Andrea, um, and others like her on the street, we should have them come back and make sure we keep following up on this. I don't know if that's like something that we can do, but that's my. Right here, got.
Well, that's what I was saying to him, but have them come back and keep us informed, what's going on.
So, does that mean he'd come back June twentieth or?
Yeah, we can request him to come back, get this done.
Thank you.
Just give me a call.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna make sure this is done because the other builder, I'm not holding you responsible for the other builder or was, you know, they said this is gonna get done, this is gonna get this. And no, nobody held him responsible.
Yep. I hear you.
Unfortunately, you. You know, sometimes it gets lost in paperwork. Andrea, can I get your phone number? Can you put your name and your phone number on that list so I can get in contact with you?
Okay.
How do I get ahold of this discussion on the video, cause I wanna bring this back to the developer.
YouTube.
On YouTube, okay.
Couple of days.
He's a good guy and I'm sure that I can compromise some, some of the cost back with him.
With Mike.
Yeah. I'm hoping.
Yeah, let him know what you're dealing with.
I'd try to get it back to Amory.
Unfortunately, twelve years, the deterioration that just.
Time, she's not getting anywhere, so I can see it that way as well.
Well, yeah, and if she wants to sell, it's a deterrent on our price and maybe actually.
Biggest investment is their house.
Yeah, and maybe actually people can, there'll be certain types of mortgages that might not qualify due to it.
Yeah, and I have to sell the house for the next three months, I have no choice.
Alright.
I'm gonna put this on the agenda, okay with the board?
Yeah.
Um, for. The earliest, uh.
Six thirty?
Six thirty, six thirty-five.
Yep.
Thanks, Terry.
On June twentieth.
Okay. The pond's killing me. Hey, you guys out of me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
How you doing?
Good, yeah.
Hey, Casey.
You know. I'm gonna try to make this quick, for sure.
Last guy, Bert, how do you sound?
Well, no opposition. I, for the record, my name is Casey Bursh, I work for solely engineering um in Brayford, Connecticut. And I'm just here uh to discuss with you guys tonight our process with uh ZBA right now. And what we're, and what we've been doing and what we've been presenting to them. We're trying to defend our parking ratio and and through that, you know, the seventy-three spaces, we, we only need thirty-four. Technically, only really fourteen per um all the studies that have ever been done, but, so during that process. Um, we've consulted with the Institute of um. Institute of Transportation Engineering Parking Manual, we've done our own independent study, which we did a year ago, um but we updated it and it's still the same. Um, and all that is presented with, you know, about fourteen or fifteen is peak hour um for a parking demand. And another interesting thing that we read in the Institute of Transportation Engineer Manual is that. They break out all specific uses throughout all different types of retail, throughout all different types of personal office and. Uh, personal services. They consider an O'Reilly's Auto Parts Store as an automobile parts sales store. Which is different from their retail classification of shopping center and general retail. And this is what we're pitching to ZBA. We're almost there with them, we got one more meeting, um, we just need to present a few more. Uh, figures and documents and I think we, I think we got it. I just wanted to come to you guys tonight because our, we did read. Um, one of your, in your zoning bylaws, one sixty-seven dash fourteen K, so you have, in, in that section, you have your uses. And your parking ratios from A through J, yeah, A through J. And then K is, is what I'm gonna read to you next, and then L is any deviation you go to the zone for appeals, which. At the time, we considered it uh general retail under your classifications and that was the direction that we were given to go to ZBA. No, that's fine, um, we needed to go for other variances anyway. Now, one sixty-seven dash K, it says, an adequate number of spaces. Actual number to be determined by the planning board on a case-by-case basis. Will be required to accommodate customers, patrons and employees at driving establishments, opening, open-air retail business, amusements. And all other permitted uses not specifically enamorated herein. That sentence there, if we consider ourselves an automobile parts store and not retail, that's kind of where we're.
You are an auto parts store.
Right. And that's the argument that we're making in ZBA and we noticed that we can also, you know, discuss it with you guys as well under, under this regulation. Now, I'm not, I'm not saying that we want to, but we're going forward with the plan with the ZBA. I just know the process of getting meetings with you guys and it's every, you guys are a lot better, it's every other two weeks, which is phenomenal. Which I never thought I'd say I liked so much, but yes, one, once a month and having four ZBA meetings once a month puts a project out for four months is, is horrendous. But, that's, that's a whole nother story. Um, so. I just wanna come to you guys and if, I don't think it's gonna happen, but if things go south. And, and we get rid of the other variances by modifying a plan or not, and I was wondering what the process is with the, the planning board. To get a permit amended or an application amended.
Per site plan?
Per site plan, yeah. With, with this consideration.
The thirty-four is an absolute not issue with me, I think that is more than enough. Um, I'm not sure about the process, but as far as the accepting, I am definitely.
Okay.
In favor of that. That, that is a better number than seventy, right, so strongly in favor of.
Well, I, I mean, I assume that since you, you guys did approve the, the plan as is and, but. We're, we're talking with our lawyers and our lawyers are talking with um town council right now to, for the ZBA stuff and, and looking over this and that's kind of how this came up. Um, and uh, so if we were to come back. If things went south, if we were to come back and, which we don't think is gonna happen, we, we've, we've submitted all of our information. The IT manual, the um, our independent studies, and they agree, they don't wanna see seventy-three parking spots either. They're, they're making the argument now that our hardship needs to say, hey, you could have done it, but because you can't get the seventy-three spaces. Here is our issue. And we proved that, we, we can actually fit seventy-six parking spaces, it's tight, it's like. Right up against the other drop.
No rest, no green.
No, no green, um, underground attention, walls on all ends, um, and, but the hardship would be that. For soils, we have to be four feet above for our septic, so that, that is part of the hardship that they allow you to concede for. So I don't see a problem with the next ZBA meeting, I just wanna, I wanna have. I wanna have a backup, I wanna have it out of you, I wanna know what it would take to go through this process again with that in mind.
Well, I don't know. Well, you're coming back with a site plan modification, but, but what you would be looking at is really seeing no change in that plan.
Well, that's the thing, um we may have to add a little more impervious area, which I would have to rerun the the drainage numbers. The only thing is um to have, or we do thirty three spaces and and it and it's pretty close because. Um we don't wanna go back for any variances, so the reduction in parking space would also have to be considered. Unless, say, I don't know how the process goes, if if we went and got quantity from like acceptance from you guys. And we go back to them for the other variances, they're gonna be like, what what's what's what about the quantity acceptance, but. And we're like, oh, we got that approved by planning board, put it under this category.
I think that would have, that is how that would work, cause we already approved it as that number. So like you were saying, if you if you came back with uh hey, we're an amendment, you're not actually amending or changing the plan at all.
Right.
Could you, if you came back to us, you you. You're asking for the exact same thing that we already gave you permission for, so I don't know if we could do. To add more spaces on that plan, right?
No.
I think what he may have to actually ask for is a determination from the planning board for that specific use under that one sixty seven.
So we can do that like separately, right, like he doesn't really have to do, like we can give you, we can give him a piece of paper that says. Apply this to this. I I think it should be an amendment to the site plan so that it's noted on the plan.
Because the site plan, I have a list of three variances, I could take that one variance off and get that amended to you guys.
The other variant?
The loading area, which we we adequately proved to them, which they had no problem with.
It was just small, alright.
Yeah, it was ten feet small, but it was the same square footage, um because it was wider than what.
Ran along parallel, yeah, gotcha.
And the parking um size, so we did uh eighteen by ten instead of twenty by ten. Um which is eighteen by nine is kind of a national standard, so which they were fine with as well. Um but that would all be, that's all lumped into the three variances that were under. The site plan review application that we applied for, so. Uh we would, I guess we would come in with a new site plan without that verbiage on it and try to get. Um and have a determination um letter from you guys. Again, I don't think it's gonna come to this, I just I just, I want to be able to have this dialogue with you guys now. Um just in case, we are gonna try to submit our last bit of material next week, hopefully get comments from your attorney. And hopefully we'll have that dialogue more with our attorney and Herc and your attorney and everything will be good, but if not. I wanna, I would like to know the process on and how long that would take to submit, you know, what we're talking about here now. Amendment and.
The thing, I I just don't know if we'd have to have. If you have to go through the meetings and the people again, like or is that a butter's coming in again? Is that the whole thing all over? We already, we already approved this plan like it was.
Right, and if that doesn't change then.
So I would say. I I don't, I just don't know.
To be on the safe side, I would probably advertise it and send it up to the others.
So can I ask, because I wasn't here during this approval, what did we approve it under if? If it's the fourteen, one sixty seven fourteen K now, what did we approve it under?
Uh retail for one per one hundred square feet.
One per one hundred.
With a variance, your approval was susceptible to us getting a variance to ZBA.
Okay.
And that's what we're trying to do now, so you guys are okay with the count, but you never made it like verbally, cause we never brought a specific use.
We thought that you were gonna be getting, we thought he was gonna be getting the approval by them, cause we thought it was a great idea. And then he's not getting, he may not get the approval from them.
Okay.
So that's why we kinda sent him along without explicit permission because it was assumed. So we basically, we basically approved the site plan. That he needed to go get a variance on.
Okay. Gotcha. Gotcha.
So which case we already approved the variance?
No.
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 We, well, we approved.
Approved the site plan.
We pre-approved.
Subject.
Subject to a variance.
Yeah, so if zoning board says either, if they say, you know, no or yes, like we we still have our.
No, cause if they say no, then that 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 voids our endorsement.
Your, your.
So it's like, we're saying yes, as long as they say yes, if they say no, we say no.
Back then to fourteen K.
But it was asked for, it was never requested or tried.
Trying to figure out the, yeah, the process to come back and ask for that. Under a specific use of automobile parts store, which you guys do not have listed under your category A through J.
So we approved it under the one sixty seven. Fourteen F. Right?
What's that?
The one one space for a hundred feet of.
I think it's A, I think it's one of the first ones, what's the first one? Oh yeah, no, you're right, you're probably with the retail.
Yeah, cause before that sped in hospitals and houses.
The verbiage actually doesn't get into the site plan approval letters or anything like that.
So so retail, it also is not defined at all in your in your.
All retails, regularly.
Right, right, so it's very, it's very generic and um obviously, we don't wanna apply the same rate. That a Walmart has to uh auto like automobile parts store. Um in in the in internationally, uh nationally, um they don't do that either.
It'd be a different standard.
Right. And and actually, actually, there's thirty one different types of, I mean, they don't even call it retail, it's just thirty different types of. Of business, um thirty one different types of business in that sector, that's not like personal service and our office, that sector. And then when they call retail, they have like shopping center retail, they have, you know, and then they have the automobile parts store and other. Thirty different other type of things that had generated such a different um parking demand, um that they. They noted that and they saw that and they and they they made a manual accord, so. That's that's our argument.
Just, I don't know, indirectly, like the, you know, they did like one in Kingston or whatever, right? I don't know, O'Reilly just put one in in Kingston, I don't know if you were familiar, I was just gonna say, and I know this one in Brockton, I recently.
So O'Reilly's does their own permitting if they think it's going to be easy. They they give the developer the permitting if they think it's gonna be hard. So I don't know if they knew something about Halifax.
No, I was just, I was just gonna say. Nobody knows anything. Just because those are two that I'm familiar with, I didn't know if that would help you to present those and say, hey, these are two that are local to here. And there's no way either one of those have thirty two, like that one in Brockton's like in a plaza with like a nail place or something and like.
We 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 made that um pitch to the board.
Okay, I just didn't know if it would help you.
You know, just like other municipalities around and they're like, well, when are those other municipalities?
Yeah.
Where we're very, we're more strict for a reason and we're like.
Well, no, I think the point of bringing it up is that the fact that it works, it's not that, it's not that you're necessarily comparing the two.
Oh, we hit that home, I I I did, I I presented the first one, they 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 hit me with the hardship, I couldn't really. Hit it home with them, so I brought in, we brought in my boss, who's done ZBA stuff a lot. And you know, he he two, he had to go to two meetings still, but really good arguments, um but they still not, they weren't convinced with the hardship, they. They talked with um the attorney, she's finally sent us a letter, uh we were able to review it and that's what we're we're just. Providing informa- information per that letter now and hopefully it will be, it won't be a non-issue, so. Again, this was just a discussion to to uh, I wasn't gonna like give you guys anything or anything like that, but now it's just a discussion to see what the next steps. Would be in case that happened or in case something went through.
Just to save us a half hour the next time we see you.
Right, yeah, yeah.
No, it's good to get your ducks in a row ahead of time.
So are we in agreement that you would have to resubmit?
For a K instead of an F?
He, yeah, I think that's what I think that's.
That says we need these many variances, because that was a requ- on your checklist, you said if you need variance, put them on, put a more document, so we did that on the sheets. And we did it in our narrative too, but I don't, you know, I mean.
So I think all you need is the cover page essentially.
No, but I I I just don't, I don't know how you'd do it other than resubmit it and we'll just do it the whole thing, you strike that. We sign, we're all in favor of it.
Okay.
We're just gonna have to, when we do that, we're just gonna have to do a full determination as to why. You're doing it.
Okay.
And recommending or however.
This is better. I have no problem with that.
That way, nothing to come back.
So are we all in agreement that we would be okay with that as long as the zoning board was okay with it? Is that gonna remain the same? Is everybody still, I mean, before we have them go spend all that money if any of us, do you know what I mean?
If you do read K, it still says that anything A through, any deviation A through K has to go back to ZBA, so. I really don't know how that works in the.
Yeah, how does that, how does that work when it when it states that?
Planning board would give. Make that determination that X amount of spaces would be suitable for.
Alright, so we'll make, we'll make sure that we have that.
Probably review and we have this type of determination to give to.
Again, I'm not planning to do this way, I'm just.
Just be fixed.
No, it's.
So if you were gonna do it that way, okay.
Like, I'm not sure how the planning board would feel, you know, I mean, I'm just trying to think.
Oh, as far as bucking like the other board, I, it doesn't bother me a bit, I think this was the correct thing to do.
Sure.
So when are you going back to them?
Um July eighth.
Whoa.
July fourth wasn't available now.
That's us.
Wait.
We're July fourth.
Are you really on July fourth?
We can, no.
No, we, it's it's the holiday, no, we're not meeting by July fourth, it's the Thursday.
Okay, oh, okay.
A vote could be more patriotic.
I just checked it, I like when I, when I saw the list.
Motion to move that meeting to now.
I I did, I did pitch, I'm like, I know you guys are volunteers, but how about meeting in like two weeks?
We we meet, we meet on June twenty.
Special meeting or something, but sometimes do that.
For the zoning board, you mean?
Yeah, for the zoning board, I was like, I don't know, they're like, nah, nah, they left it all, I was serious.
I can see why.
It's a tap, man.
Yeah. So that's that's where we're at, um it was, thank you guys for.
So that'll be five months with the zoning board?
Yeah, yeah. On top of, was it probably?
Just a, just a couple of weeks for those.
Oh, yeah. Plus, plus wetlands and then and then uh.
Who would have thought it would have taken that?
Wait, are we, are we surgeon to monthly meetings now?
And I think that'll be the last I design here. Thank you guys.
Happy for.
Good luck.
Why, if you get that one, you're an expert, so.
Yeah.
If if I can find it, develop it. Bye guys.
Bye.
Bye.
Anybody wanna pay some bills?
Nah.
I don't have bills, all we have is the registry, okay, straight.
At the meeting minute, we already did.
Do um, do we have to do the reorganization? Organization?
Should we pay this bill first? For a while.
And you guys should do the meeting minutes, cause I wasn't there, so I didn't do that.
Uh, yeah, you're in there, you got number seven. We got uh. Cutlass's excess to go on here too before you can record.
Before I can send it yet.
Try to make a motion to pay. A bill dated June sixth, twenty nineteen to the Plymouth County Registry Deeds, fifty Aubrey Street, Plymouth, Massachusetts, zero two three six zero. For the recording of planning board signatures in the amount of seventy seven dollars even.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So it looks like we get enough money to get that laptop done.
No, but in all seriousness, if we want, in the meantime, if we want a projector, right? The projectors nowadays, I say nowadays, cause I s- I still have a projector from like five years ago, that's like. Expensive and big, but you can buy them on on Amazon and they are, they they're tiny. They're like this by that and they plug right into your computer and they're like a hundred bucks.
Is there a local place we can get on it?
I mean, I don't know of any local place that carries stuff like that.
Yeah, I know a local place.
I know, that's the thing.
That's tough, but I mean, honestly, it's gonna be, I mean. In even, and this is maybe pushing it, right? Other technology, if you wanna implement stuff like that, since we're getting a loaner laptop, is possibly instead of something like this. Right, instead of this recorder, if you have a recorder pen. That that plugs into your computer and takes notes basically from what was said. So it it helps.
I like the way you just, I'm.
Job control.
I'm not shit on technology, so.
Well, just plug it into your computer.
I know, I don't like to plug it into my computer.
Okay. Just letting you know, just letting you know.
Don't plug it into any airport.
If I ever get there, I'll let you know.
No problem. Not paying the notes, so anything that's tech that can take notes for me, I am all for it.
It's in our best interest that she does the handwriting, cause.
I mean, honestly.
Everything I say.
A lot of it too is.
Oh, well, what about voice to text too?
Recognition too.
Yeah, exactly.
And then the autocorrect that comes along with it. It's like, no, I meant to say that, not that.
Yeah.
All the time.
I prefer having her filter me out.
It would be nice to have, you know, laptop in the sense that we could, some sort of. Mobile device that we can use if if need be to move to. You know, downstairs in the selectmen's room, if we end up like going down there a couple of times. We can always, you know, move stuff right to the interactive screen that they're gonna probably put down there, I think it will definitely bring us into. The newer age.
Which is cool, but we always gotta remember that it's what the people are bringing, cause like, we're not bringing in these things and being like, hey, look at this thing I made to put on the projector. So we're still, still all dependent on somebody bringing something to use it. We don't use it, we don't do it, we don't make things for it, it's a matter of.
And then as technology changes.
Yeah, so if if nobody brings it in or nobody brings in this thing.
But for us though.
Like the one in the box for ten years.
I like I was saying though, when he was explaining like the, when he was explaining pastel lane, right? I'll be honest with you, I I'd, I'd love to know exactly where pastel lane is, I don't know where it is, but in that sense. We have interactive TV, right? Keyboard, I could have put it up on here, Google mapped it really quick, put up a picture and say, show me exactly like where we're talking about, aerial photo. Like stuff like that, I think will be super beneficial to know exactly what we're talking about, to get a better understanding of. What we're looking at rather than just black and white here. I think it'd be cool, I think it'll be helpful.
Well, to to like when we were just looking up this, if we had um, you know, one sixty seven fourteen K. So that the audience could see it and they see what we're looking at, instead of just being like, what are they looking at, what are they talking about?
Yeah.
You know?
It's it's, it'll be.
Okay, we'll look over the minutes. Motion to approve the meeting minutes for February seventh, two thousand nineteen. Oh wait, did you not?
I I can't, I don't think I can. Oh, was that February seventh?
Yeah, you second.
Oh, no. I remember reading this a long time ago, we just never, didn't you send these to us like?
But it's a case of getting the correct people here.
Mark.
Well, the three of us are here.
Yeah, I've already read these ones.
Seven motions, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I haven't seen the new sign yet on uh R and G automotive either, must be taking a while.
I think he still has to uh pick up this letter and record it with the registry deeds.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Wow, no, like, oh, really, like, they didn't, they haven't come by yet because he was kind of. He was trying to like get it done quick.
We should be able to do April eighteenth, so.
Oh, you already did, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you probably just.
We'll get the other second copy.
Second of fish.
I don't think you can do this one.
No, we can't do that, that's May sixteenth.
Oh, April eighteen, oh, yeah. That was my favorite meeting. Oh, please, I don't oppose it, so I, I don't agree with this meeting, with this minutes. Because it's saying that I'm absent.
You phoned.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Took me a minute.
Oh, wait, hold on.
No, no, no.
This says phone in call, huh?
That, I thought that was Carlos.
No, I called Carlos.
Yeah, Carl- Carlos was out.
Yeah, I can adjust that.
Yeah, I thought I, I was like, wait.
No, I can adjust that.
Well, you were here and then you were absent.
I was off, I was off the vote.
But wasn't the meeting where you were on the phone?
Or my.
No.
No, it was a voice vote for Carlos, cause Carlos was, remember he was in the car and then like.
We needed four.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Definitely was there.
You can approve it with that.
Change.
With the contingency, that that gets changed. I'd make a motion to approve the April eighteenth of twenty nineteen minutes with the one correction that.
You were here?
Jonathan Soroka was there, not absent and present at the same time.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
It's gonna be a long motion, but. Today is the eighth-sixth.
Okay, so that just leaves May sixteenth. So did you wanna reorganize, you wanna wait until Carlos is here?
Make a motion, wait till Carlos comes back.
Second.
Cause I think we actually have a formally motion. I think, but, what are you talking about, we have the motion to do a reorganization.
Motion to your time, but not a motion to wait.
I'll make a semi non-official motion to reorganize the lid, just to make sure.
When Maxi, Maxi.
No, sorry.
He's not here.
I'm always.
See, there it is again.
He's, he's president and absent in this one.
Unless.
Were you on the phone?
Yeah.
Might as well be now. Unless we just like put Carlos as, like, the person that does everything. He is. Vice chair in what?
Ah, we can, yeah, we can do that. Not picking on the guy who's not here.
There's a reason why you should be here.
Yeah, yeah, especially when we vote for this.
Okay, so the other thing we had was the letter for, um.
Walmart.
Walmart.
Walmart?
Walmart.
And they're doing the goat scape and, does anyone know, has anyone seen it?
They've seen it.
The goat scape and, they're supposed to be doing this like experimental goat grazing, instead of mowing the lawn?
And they're draining.
They're gonna set up.
So they're draining each one.
Ooh, I love that.
Yeah, it's on the Wikipedia, right?
Yeah.
So like, I know there's a place in Ducksbury that does it, called Goat.
I'm shelled with all my questions.
Oh, I'll also check that out.
So I wanted to check it out, so.
I got no.
That would be wonderful, it'd save much fuel and.
Exactly, it makes perfect sense, right? They already need the grass. I don't know. They're supposed to be starting soon. Yeah, I don't know, I thought it was a good idea.
Goats don't feel like it. They weren't loving the area.
They're on strike.
They're on strike.
Let's see, too, this is supposed to be like the first like pilot program, so, hopefully it works.
Oh, that's awesome. All for it.
So, the letter to Walmart was, uh.
We did send that, right?
No, it's in your folder.
I did?
We haven't sent it yet?
No, we have not, I didn't get any, yes, this is good.
I don't have the letter either.
It's yours or mine?
I sent an email.
Who asked for you, cause I'm not an employee.
Carlos.
Not mine.
Carlos was the only one that responded back to my email on it, and he asked us to make sure we sent it to someone other than to whom it may concern, and I explained to him that.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That to whom it may concerns is gonna go to corporate headquarters, but I have the manager's name for the local store, that I'll.
Yeah. Yeah, he was very particular.
We're still waiting for that name.
Yeah, like, how do you know? Like, how would you know?
We put it on an interactive TV.
Should you write the manager's name, maybe, and then, or, like, just in case they happen to be out on leave, or second in command, if you will, you know what I mean?
I would just, I have, I have his name.
Or.
Who else is supposed to have that?
Or who's ever in charge when you're not there.
How are we supposed to know who the manager of Walmart is?
Local manager.
Yeah.
And put his name on it.
Perfect.
I wouldn't call down there and be like, who's your manager? Alright, thanks, click, I'm gonna write that down.
Do I have a.
To use a stamp?
Do I have a motion to, um, send the letter to Walmart? Did you see it?
I did not see it.
It's pretty straightforward.
Make a motion to accept the.
Did you read it?
Yeah.
Letter to be sent to Walmart?
Some motion is a second?
I'll second it.
I'll, I'll, you're first.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Arizona, I thought.
Minutes for the sixteen?
Is this for me?
Yes, whoever got one in their folder needs to do it.
I'm not, I'm just not sure if this wasn't my folder, it could've been Marcus.
Yeah, I think that's where the big house was too.
Oh, that is definitely.
Except for Marcus, he actually signed one, I think, in January.
I feel like I.
Whatever, I'll sign it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Have you signed it?
I've already done this course, but whatever.
Um, and every two years, you guys have to do the online thing?
Yeah.
You can't do that on iPad.
No?
No, it's not, uh, Apple compatible, Microsoft only.
I gotta get a laptop or something to get on.
We got a Walmart coming.
July first?
Could teach you.
All it gets is iPad.
Security too. And geek out for another half hour.
Is the sixteen able to be approved?
No, we're not, we're not all due for that. That's right, I said, that's the only one we had left.
Okay.
And Autumn Lane has come in?
Yeah, you guys briefly reviewed it, I just put it on the agenda, just in case you wanna look at it, or if you want me to, um.
I didn't wanna bring that up with pastel lane.
Um, if you want me to get ahold of the developer to come in, but I think there were a couple of things in the review that we got, the final, um, inspections from the, um, engineer that needed to be done.
Was that Amory too?
I think it was. I can double check and let you know, but I just put it on the agenda, just in case you want to look at it again.
Yeah, I mean, we could put it on for the next meeting and go through it.
Okay. Want me to get ahold of the developer to have it sent?
We can try.
For the review?
We can try. It's another one who's been elusive.
Is that the one over near Ellen Street, uh, on Ellen Street?
Yeah, near Robbins Pond.
Yeah.
Did they, uh, build a house on the other lot?
I don't think so.
Cause we haven't released, right?
Autumn Lane?
Yeah.
No, Autumn Lane is outside.
We released it?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we did.
We released their bond?
Um. Don't know if it was under a bond or, but I don't think they, um.
Thought we were holding the last lot.
I don't think they were waiting.
I didn't remember signing it off.
Autumn? Who would that have been?
Um. Trainee, um. Trainee Yellow?
John Triani.
Triani.
Cool.
The zoning board approved the, um, farmhouse for six. Did we do a site plan for that?
Yeah, so we had to, that was the one, first one, the attorney said we had to sign it, second one.
Oh, we signed a Form A.
No, that's Form A, we didn't do a site plan for that.
Just the Form A, alright.
I don't know if we are obligated to, because it's pretty.
Yeah, but it was a change, so I think that's what kicked it in. Because there's another regulation, you can't have more than four families on one acre lot. But, didn't they put a condition on it too, till the building came down?
Yeah, um, building department has issued demolition permits. I'll have to do a little bit more research on this, we might, might actually be still holding the lot.
I thought we were, cause I didn't remember that we signed it off, cause the plan.
The plant is finished, though.
Well, yeah, but we just got the plan not that long ago.
You know, it'd be cool, to, to, I'll tell you what we do, like, have that Sony map, uh, like, rolling up view, so you can like zoom in to find like this.
Oh, yeah, like overlaying.
Kind of like overlay.
Yes, that would be awesome.
Yeah, cause I don't think it would, well, probably is, if you look at the assesses, but but it still makes it tough, because those are broken up in the panel panels.
Do you have Walmart?
Zoom in there.
Thank you.
Cause we've used that a handful of times, like, where it's.
Yeah, you can't really, you don't know the difference between five hundred feet when you're looking at that.
Very cool.
I see a street from here.
Yeah, that is Flumon Street, uh, Thompson's. The one, three stop sign, the other three red lights in our town.
And when, when we were a kid, there was one.
Oh, really? They didn't have the stop and drop one, and they didn't have the Walmart one?
Right.
It was just, uh, one oh six and, uh.
Pumpkins, that's all it was.
Whether a pumpkin was smashed or not.
How do you have already updated Walmart to have that manager's name on it so we're concerned?
Wait, you're not gonna stamp it?
You can sign it.
They didn't even broke up the stamps. I'll stamp it.
Kids, why? Why the hell do I know who works for Walmart?
Um, I was at that zoning meeting for the farmhouse, and that was a, um, changing it from a four to a six, correct?
Oh, for six different, uh, residences or whatever?
I think so, I think it was from a four to a six, or was it a five to a six?
Four to six.
Four, that's what I thought, four to six.
Now, is that because it was already permitted as four, but they were using it over that? I'm just curious.
Well, I think that, from my recollection of when it was for sale as a realtor, knowing that it wasn't okay to have any, a couple of the places was the determination. That was the determination in the time period, so it was sold as not having that.
It's weird when a piece of property is around for so long, and I, I think that was one of those things, I don't think anybody really knew what they were doing over there.
We're not, Terry, we're not gonna be involved at all with that, uh, long-term permit, or long-term trailer permit for the Halifax Settlement.
No, that sounds, uh, bogus, like.
Did everybody in the town receive a letter?
For what?
For this, for the town, for the, for the meeting, whatever. It's certified mail, so certified mail was sent out to say that there was gonna be a selectmen's meeting.
Okay, that's from the selectmen.
July, whatever.
Yeah.
To everyone in town?
I got.
That must've cost a fortune.
It's, at least three dollars a letter, yeah.
I haven't received one.
Oh, you didn't? Am I like, I'm like, I'm not in the butter.
Maybe you're close enough, maybe you were, you were within five hundred feet, I bet.
We're pretty close.
Top of that, for the school?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause if you go over Carver, or whatever, you're, you're on the left side, yeah, that's probably not too far, cause if you go your backyard, shoot over South Street, one more backyard, and it was the school.
So doesn't matter, I thought it was only directed butters, I'm not gonna direct a butter though.
I don't know what their, um.
Their radius is.
Yeah, so if it was.
Selectmen, but that's got nothing to do with.
If it was like five hundred or a thousand feet, that's one of the.
I was just like, if that went up to everybody in the town, that would've cost a fortune.
Well, even sometimes when we get the bills, when they're like, dude, you're really, it was three hundred and seventy-five dollars for mailing, like.
I sent out something, uh, second day for the post office, and it still has never gotten to the person, and it was a year and a half ago, and they said that they don't, they don't, um, guarantee it. That's what they said, I was like, but I bought two day, so what does that mean?
Do I get my money back?
No.
No.
But there was some fanned, um, Pat's towels I sent to Florida, and they never got to Florida.
Well, well, I think it needs a site plan.
Somebody stole them.
Requirement for that multi-family.
What is this one?
For the farmhouse.
No permit shall be granted for any commercial, industrial, business, institutional, apartment, multi-dwelling municipal, or skilled school building, or public utility structure, and none of the above classes of structures shall, shall be constructed or externally enlarged, and no such use shall be expanded or established in an existing building, or lot not theretofore used for such purposes except in conformity with the site plan bearing an endorsement of approval by the planning board.
What five R is that?
That would be one sixty-seven twenty-eight.
I think we should send the zoning board a letter.
I'm in agreement with that.
So what are the, in front of the zoning board's, right now you're saying they're going for the increase on the use?
From four to six.
Yeah, and all they have is a Form A from us, or at least that I've seen, unless there would be something outdated. Something that was done prior to me.
And I don't believe there's any site plan on file.
I looked at the file out of curiosity after that, um, due to the thing that I was there for that night, and, um, it's not there, there wasn't anything in the file from the sixties, like claimed. I have a picture of.
And the whole idea is to get site plans on all this stuff, yeah.
Yeah, that's clearly what that says.
Yep.
Site plan first.
And then there's another section.
Then there's another section. That's right, yeah. Okay, so this is where it says in the location of more than four fam- families per any one acre in any unsued area. I think we need to send them a letter. Yeah, but, hold on, what is that? Saying that we believe they need a site plan for that. There's gotta be, that's Think of the ads, think of Anna Wong.
That's grandfathered nineteen eighteen, they built on those lots.
But it doesn't say anything about lots, it just says per acre. Well, if you only have one acre, you can't have more than four dwellings on it. Or four families on it. Well, that's what, but I'm wondering if you could interpret that, that if you had a four acre lot with four families, even though the four families all lived right next to each other, that wouldn't matter, right? Cause you would have
I guess that's how you interpret it.
That's what I'm getting at, can't like But if you have one acre, you can't have more than four.
I think furniture comes into it as well.
No.
Well, how many acres is that lot?
Possible. They only have forty thousand square feet. Building permits for any dwelling
So that building in the back is not part of there?
No, that's a separate lot. That's a separate lot now, they, it comes down on the other side. That's what we did.
Oh, yeah, that's right, we do it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
To make it conform with the forty thousand square That would result in the location of more than four families per any one acre.
Yeah.
They only have one acre. They don't have an acre, they have lots, they have forty thousand. So I don't think they can increase it to six.
Like they can technically even have it to four. Technically speaking. Based off of that, if you're
Yeah, but since it doesn't say
But that would be a grandfathered, in my opinion, it would be a grandfathered use that it was for.
But did they, did they originally come in saying that they're gonna do four, like a long, long time ago?
They had permits.
They had permits saying that they're gonna have four families?
It was sold like that.
No, no, they have permits from back.
Okay, so that's different, I was assuming that they just willy-nillyed it like halfway through and said like
No, now they're looking for two more.
Nah. That right there cuts it at the legs.
I'd say so.
Yeah, that
That's pretty clear as day, there's no here and without or around the corner.
One and four, you're clear on any unsued town. So, I think we should send the zoning board a letter stating that the farmhouse, there was no site plan on site, on file. And we haven't approved anything.
It's their printer, we have some their printer.
Yeah, under one sixty-seven twenty-eight and Halifax code article two.
I agree.
We have time to send out the letter because it's July, whatever.
Well, if they just approved it, we need to send the letter out now.
Send a letter to who?
Zoning board. That the farmhouse needs a site plan. And that under
One sixty-seven twenty-eight.
One sixty-seven twenty-eight site plan. They need a site plan.
And?
One sixty-seven twenty-eight. And then, under chapter two oh three dash four. It can only be four families on one acre. That's under the dwelling de- intensity.
Wonder if they consider an in-law apartment?
One.
Is that another family? An in-law apartment added onto a regular house is not typically two-family though.
It's supposed to be required to be somebody related to you, so I don't know.
I agree, they could, they could have someone, they could quote-unquote have two fam- their families living in two of those apartments and then renting out four, or whatever, or one of them.
Renting out four.
Well, it's four family, essentially at the moment. Technically speaking, it's a four-family house.
You can have two in-laws on one property.
But they have six. However they configure that.
It says families.
I'm just saying that, that
Family is an independently living, um, group. Yeah, so technically, even if it was four people, it would be four families, if there were four, but like, it could be as many as sixteen people. Still be four families, that's one of the things I think is a little weird. It's really not, if you know what I'm saying. Like I'm just like realistically, it could be anywhere, you're protecting four people, which is nonsense, but sixteen, sounds like you should be protecting something. But you can't regulate who's there, so Yeah, that's what, I mean, that's kind of, it's a little funky.
Do we need to make a motion for that letter, or is it just on? I don't know, cause I'm new.
I don't think you do. Make a motion to sa- to send it.
Do we have to?
Yeah.
You don't want to get thirty percent and stuff willy-nilly?
Well, I mean, it's the consensus of the board, so we could make a motion and send it.
Alright, so would the motion be, I make, um, make a motion to send a letter to zoning board to alert them to one sixty-seven twenty-eight and the need for a site plan? And, um, under chapter two oh three dash four, Halifax code article two, um,
Four, I think.
Hmm?
The other one was four.
Oh, da- two oh three dash four, four family under one acre, unless it's on, um, if it's on an unsued area for dwelling intensity.
Is motion for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who's second?
Voice recognition.
We can get microphones if you would.
Okay, the other thing I would suggest Picking up all the stuff I say under my breath. I would suggest that maybe, um, Terry, do we have a, a book for, um, Amy?
Um, not yet, I did not get to that.
Okay. Cause Larry
But I will, um, see if I can get one put together.
Larry
You want the whole, um, bylaws, or do you want just the, uh, the zoning and subdivision control style? Do you want a whole book?
Um, it, what do they have?
See that
Just a binder, no, this is a regular binder.
Yeah, so you're, like a three-ring binder with
See that, the white one up there, it's with blue on the corner?
Yeah.
Ever blue stripe, it's that way.
That's what I get, I don't even bring it, cause it's massive.
Yeah, go on the phone.
Larry going too, didn't he?
Larry?
I say the PDF, if you, if you have a decent sized phone, I typically go PDF, cause I'll just do a search real quick.
Maybe you can get it back from
I like this term.
Versus just
I've seen them since January.
Yeah, because then you have to read them more, they are.
The only person that I know that knows the bylaws by page is Gordon and sometimes Terry, or more Terry than Gordon.
Well, because they, yeah.
Cause they know it very well.
I would like to have a binder and then I'm gonna do what you did
Yeah.
With the PDF. I wanna do the search and find like I can on the website anyway.
Alright, so
That would be cool. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you do the, um, subdivision too?
It's all, if I do the whole thing, it'll be in it.
She does the whole shebang.
Yeah. Cause I don't think they produce these anymore either, right?
Whatever, so they do bylaws.
But will it be in there?
Anytime, um, a bylaw is accepted by the town, um, one of our people down in the selectmen's office will
Take that.
Yeah, I wanna know.
Right after the chairman general approves it and then sends out the new pages and we take out the old and put it in there.
Very cool.
It's what we do with these.
Cool.
You still doing these?
No.
No.
No, they stopped doing those, cause it costs too much for printing.
When did they stop that?
Uh,
Been a long time ago.
Three or four years ago?
Oh, really?
Yeah, probably more.
No, cause I don't think Irma's been here that long. Five years tops.
Yeah. So what's the official copy now? Town clerk have it?
Probably. But we don't, I don't think she's
Cause it's supposed to be an official.
Yeah, town clerk probably
You'd think there'd be at least one post town. That's what these were, they were all official copies.
Yeah, well, official copies would be good, so that we'd be sure we were reading the right thing, right?
That's what I liked about the guy's idea, is because if everybody uses that same database, nobody can pull up an old sheet. Nobody can have old information. That is one of the cool things about what he said. You can still pull it.
But you gotta pop
Well, no, like, in his thing, never, like you, anytime you search No, he said it was there. Yeah, but it would be like, it would be in like parentheses and it would be like, this is what the old one, but you know what I mean? You couldn't mistakenly like Well, that's the whole point that I was saying about this. The old pages got taken out, so you didn't even know what the old changes were. Ah, yeah.
It is a, it is a good thing to have, the only problem is to make sure it's uploaded.
Yeah, somebody's gonna be on top of it.
Yeah, we always have to have a written copy, in my opinion, or a printed
So do they consider the website official? Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I would have to assume so, because if you, it would have to be official if we're basically telling people to do something. It would have to be updated, it would have to be.
Yeah, and it would have to show all the changes and not allow them to be erased.
Well, I agree, I agree.
I'll have to bring that up.
That's gonna happen.
I'll have to bring it up in the selectmen's meeting and ask the, the panel, is it updated? See what the selectmen
Well, no, you just, you can never run into a thing where somebody pulls out a piece of paper and says, well, I think your bylaws say this. We can't be like, oh yeah, crap, that's what it says on your newspaper. Well, that's what would be nice, if we had the laptop, we can just pull it up. Yeah.
And say, well, that one was, um,
Everybody can see exactly the same thing.
And I like that it would have, be a screen that people at home will be able to follow along with what we're looking at.
No, you'd have a people that are sitting here too.
Yeah, that too.
I think we should put it, well, the screen's gonna go downstairs, right?
He's talking about having a mobile screen.
Oh, the mobile screen, I gotcha, okay.
Which makes sense, cause I mean, you could put it so that people could see. Like this room is kind of odd if you had a screen on the wall.
This is a very odd shaped room.
Very rectangular.
Can we just go to the great hall?
Yeah. No one goes there.
Well, it was kind of my thing, it's like, shouldn't we be kinda, you know, if we just made one place that's really good to have a meeting rather than three or four places that Except for the great, great hall is kind of Yeah, well, maybe not the great hall, but like even like the selectmen's office, like if we Plus sound in there, when you're talking and stuff, if you don't have much, yeah, if you don't have many people in there.
Yeah.
Kind of an echo chamber in there.
It's more like far from theater, right?
It's kind of cold in the winter. Yeah, I think there's a stage, right?
Yeah, it's a theater, right? I think we should bring that back. Let's put on something like improv.
Let's, let's move the selectmen up to the great hall and we take the selectmen's the selectmen's, uh, meeting room, which is pretty awesome. Pretty awesome. I dare make a motion to adjourn.
You dare?
I dare.
I dare second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cause I'm hungry. I motioned.
The most important one of the night.
It was all favors.